All right, well, we will get started. Hello and welcome to the Voter Education Coalition in Six News Lawrence City Commission Candidate Forum. I'm Stephanie Bryant, Six News anchor and your moderator for this afternoon. The Voter Education Coalition is a nonpartisan organization that sponsors events that educate citizens about issues. The VEC also hosts candidate forums, meet and greets, and other events and policies. You can learn more about the VEC and its events by visiting our Facebook page or the VEC website at www.votereducationcoalition.org. Six News will be showing a replay of this forum several times over the next couple of weeks. It will also be available on sixlawrence.com. We would like to thank the city of Lawrence and their staff for the use of their facility and all their help in making this event possible. Here's how the format will go. Candidates will have a short introductory question and answer questions submitted by the VEC from board members, residents, and community leaders to answer. There will also be an opportunity for members of the audience to submit questions for members to answer. There will be no rebuttals on any of the questions, and the order was randomly selected on who would go first. You will get 60 seconds to answer each question. And with that, we will begin. And we'll start with this question, and we'll start with you, Mr. Stumbling Bear. Why are you running and what are your top three priorities?
Hello, I am Dustin Stumbling Bear, and I'm a member of the Kiwa Tribe. I come from a long line of chiefs. We were always taught throughout my childhood to take care of our community members. Lawrence has taken care of me, and now I want to step up and take care of Lawrence. I'm also a veteran, so I understand how to think on my feet, and I want to use that to serve Lawrence. Some of my top priorities would be to create more affordable housing for all of Lawrence, to enact long-term infrastructure plans, and to enact and spend your tax dollars intelligently. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christian Leike. I am a University of Kansas student, and I am running for city commission. Many of you, when you see someone of my age, a university student, some of you are hopeful, some of you may laugh, and others may cringe. I ask that you guys please listen to me with an open mind and hear what I have to say, and hopefully you'll give me a chance. I'm running on three main principles. One is accountability and transparency in government. I know we've had previous issues with a mayor. We've had a private audit find that millions of dollars were misplaced of taxpayers' money. And we've had discrepancies in the billing for much of the city. I also want to focus on affordable living. And finally, I would like to bring alternative and renewable energy and other new technologies to Lawrence for their jobs and for the safety of the United States. Thank you.
Well, I'm Dr. Mike Anderson, and I'm running because I know I can make a positive difference. Imagine you were watching a basketball game, and you've been watching it for some time now, and it got to the point where you knew which place to run for your team to win the game. But you're sitting in the second row, and no matter how hard you yell, no matter what you say, it won't have an influence on the game until you're sitting one row closer than that first row. That's what I'm trying to do. I grew up in a very political household. My dad was a captain in the Navy who started his own business. My mom, Lieutenant Colonel in the Air Force, was a nursing instructor. I understand the tenants of hard work, dedication, seeing things through to the end. For me, the biggest two issues are the economy and the arts. The arts are a vital part of the identity of Lawrence, and we should never turn our back on them. The economy is extremely important. It should be the first word on the lips of any city commissioner coming in to start this job. I hope to look at the economy in terms of its goals, its vision, its strategy, and the budget, not just five years down the line, but 10, 20, 30 years down the line to make Lawrence and continue to make Lawrence a wonderful place to live. And thank you for being here today.
My name is Matthew Herbert, and I'm a teacher at Lawrence High School. I've spent the last 12 years serving my community in a capacity as a public school teacher, teaching senior government and comparative politics, and the last two years serving as a member of the Lawrence City Commission. And I'm here before you today asking for your vote to reelect me to another two-year or four-year term. When I look at what my three major priorities are, I think those three, two of them are going to sound very, very familiar to my campaign two years ago. We have to put a priority on public safety. All decisions that we need to make need to be made with the key focus of public safety in mind. Secondly, though, we need to look at equitable infrastructure. How do we not only develop infrastructure in our community, but develop it equitably? And finally, my last priority is going to be asset management. We've gotten very good in this community over the last couple decades of building things and not so good at coming up with long-term strategic plans to actually fund those things. You need to look no further than the Lawrence Journal World this morning that talks about Peaslee Tech, a wonderful idea that once constructed lacked funding.
I'm Jennifer Ananda, and I am here running for Lawrence City Commission for many reasons. Primarily, I am running because I have two young children who I want to want to come back to Lawrence when they've grown up and seen the world. I have lived in Lawrence for 17 years. It's my home, and the people here are my family, and I am committed to that. I'm also an attorney, a social worker, a former small business owner, a parent, a community organizer, and someone who has facilitated a visioning process. All of these things are reasons that I believe that I want to give back to my community. My platforms that I'm running on are environmental sustainability, human sustainability, and future sustainability. Environmental sustainability is something that I've talked about at length. I want to talk about the other two issues as well. Human sustainability involves mental health care, addiction services, a walkable and bikeable community, as well as affordable housing. I think that all of these issues are complex problems that don't have easy solutions, and we can't pretend like they do. We have to address them head-on. And future sustainability, we developed -- I'll talk more about that later.
Good afternoon, my name is Ken Easthouse. I'm a 2002 graduate of Lawrence High School and a longtime Lawrence resident. I've previously been an election judge for Douglas County, working with Jamie Shu, and I'm currently a sitting member of the Public Incentives Review Committee. Many, a lot of people ask why we want to do this job, and it really boils down to this, is that we were always taught to be the change you want to see in the world. And you can't do that halfway, and that's why I'm up here and presenting my ideas to everyone in the community. My top three priorities would be the creation of a municipal-run city fiber internet service, which leads to a lot of different benefits within the city. We can talk about that later. Reverse the trend of citizens leaving town to find good-paying jobs. There's not a whole lot of non-government jobs that are available here in town for people who are just graduating college or been in their 30s or later. And finally, I'd like us to reorganize our city tax incentive policy to emphasize single-family housing below certain dollar amounts so that we can reverse the trend of high, of our housing turnover and shortage that we've had.
My name is Bassam Shanian. I was born in Dubai, and I moved here in 2001. I attended Free State High School, and I have a graduate degree from University of Phoenix. I'm also a downtown business owner. The reason why I'm running is I want to help guide our community into a future based on progress. And when I say progress, that means I'll be listening to you, and I'll be listening to you, and not just the privileged few. I love this city, and I want my son and daughter to pursue their dreams freely, and I want the same thing for every single citizen of Florence. People who know me would tell you that I take charge, I'm a good listener, and I get the job done. The three priorities that I would love to talk about is economic development, public safety, and tax reform. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Larson, and I'm a current city commissioner and a former small business owner. You know, we're in the 21st century, and our population is approaching almost 100,000. We need a 21st-century professional governance to guide us to a strong and healthy future. We must look for efficiencies in spending, insist on transparency in priority budgeting, and follow our strategic plan. We must make the decisions for today for economic growth that will not only pay for today, but also for the tomorrow that our children will inherit. As a progressive community, we must also work to ensure that all Lawrence residents can get their basic needs met, and that our public safety needs are met and mentally ill are treated instead of incarcerated. I am running for city commission to further the work I've started from hiring a city manager to a top-down review of our priorities. Great strides have been made, but more work needs to be done. I want to continue to use my skills as a former small business owner and a scientist to better Lawrence. My top three priorities are implementing our strategic plan, economic development, and affordable housing. Thank you.
And with that, we'll go with this next question that kind of deals with the community, and we'll start with you, Mr. Leike. Do you believe the city is successfully addressing the concerns of marginalized communities within Lawrence? If so, in what ways? If not, what do you recommend? You get 60 seconds.
Okay, I certainly do not think Lawrence is meeting all the needs of marginalized groups. One of the reasons I ran was because I believe if you don't think something's done right, you do it yourself. And I've seen from talking to students around my age or even non-students that they can't find a job, or they come out just completely overloaded in debt, and they get a job for $10 an hour or $12 an hour. And I don't think with that much of a burden on them, they'll ever be able to succeed. They are not able to find affordable housing because most of the new developments that are coming up are luxury-oriented, and I don't think with the high prices of those that they are able to save or pay off their debts. And so I would want to look into ways that we can lower the price of housing and lower the price of utilities for a lot of these groups. Thank you.
Well, I think the fact that, Stephanie, we're asking these questions means the answer is probably no, and I think it is. One of the most powerful sentences and ideas one can give someone of any group is the sentence of "you've been hurt." When someone's upset about something, it's really from one isolated incident. It's more from several different incidents that add it up. I think one of your goals as city commissioners is to make sure everyone gets hurt, that everyone has a voice, and your job is to decipher through the information, discover the good methodology from the bad methodology, good arguments from the bad arguments. And I think that involves listening to everyone and hearing their needs, and that first and foremost will help with any situation. I know that myself, I'm part of a neighborhood association, and I think I can do more to get individuals in the marginalized communities involved in the neighborhood. I should be doing more. And I hope that people, others in neighborhood associations, whether you're on the border or whatnot, invite people from marginalized communities to the meetings, and hopefully they can get involved in some of these different ideas and aspects of their neighborhood. I certainly know I can do more, and I hopefully will continue to do more. Thank you very much.
If there's one thing that you leave remembering about me today, it's the motto, "Let's finish what we've started." By no means do I think we've successfully solved the problem here in Lawrence, but I believe over the past two years, we've taken great strides to move us in a positive direction. And instead of talking hypothetically and using buzzwords, I want to talk specifics. In 2015, for the first time in over a decade, the Lawrence City Commission committed funding to the RAP program, a program which addresses our most vulnerable youth in the schools. Then in 2016, we committed funding to establish for the first time ever the Mental Health Squad within our police department that looks at de-escalation and looks at mental health when it comes to policing. These are real things that have been done. We can all share buzzwords with you in our 60-second answer, but what I'd like to do is talk to you specifically about the actions we have taken as a city commission because the actions are what we should be judged on, not our words. We are not there yet, but we are moving in a positive direction, and I would ask that you enable us to finish what we've started.
I've taught in the School of Social Welfare, the intimate partner violence class, approximately five times over three years. And in that class, I was given a syllabus at the beginning of my teaching tenure there, and the last day of the class was "others," essentially. The intersectional identities that were addressed, such as LGBTQ, immigration, race, poverty, et cetera. And something that really struck me about that was that we're saving those conversations for the end. Who are we talking about for the rest of that class? I believe that if we are going to be a community that truly addresses issues of intersectionality, we have to bring those conversations into every conversation that we have. It's not "others," it's "us." We all live on a spectrum of privilege, and we can acknowledge that, and that's okay. I think that the city has begun doing that, having those difficult conversations, and they are difficult. The thing that my students would tell me most of all was, you know, "We should be having these conversations from the time that we're children." And we should, but we aren't, so we can be the star of that.
Well said, Jennifer. I don't think I could say it much better myself. You know, I'll add that I don't think anyone who's been paying any attention to Lawrence politics thinks we're getting it right right at the moment. We have to acknowledge our own failures. When we look at a lot of the things that the city has been doing, there are positive steps, like that Mr. Herbert has said. That doesn't mean that we should stop. We should certainly keep going. One of the things that I'm really encouraged about, for example, is one of our police chief candidates, Steve Monticelli, was really big on the idea of restorative justice. And I know Justice Matters has been working with that as well. The concept of restorative justice is reorganizing the idea of we don't have to prosecute everyone in the community, that we should take some time to sit back and really understand the motivations behind everything. I think that's the first step in our police enforcement, in our schools, and mental health crises, things of that nature.
You know, I didn't mention it before, but we only listen to the privileged few. That's how I feel. And I own a business downtown, and I live in west side of Florence, and I have a warehouse in north Florence. You can see the difference in the infrastructures and streets. Like I said, no one should be left behind. I want Lawrence to attract primary businesses, so we have to look at Lawrence as a whole. An example of that is affordable housing for lower and middle income. Every hard-working family deserves a place to call home. In Lawrence, this groove is vastly underserved. I look forward to working with the developers and community to develop more affordable housing through incentives. Thank you.
Yes, I think we're doing a lot of things right at the city level, but there's also a lot we can be doing differently and more. You know, we have this, one of the strongest human rights ordinances in this region, and we have a human relations commission that helps protect those who cannot protect themselves. Now, for those who cannot advocate for themselves, then it is the city's role to advocate and protect their rights. For those who can advocate for themselves, then I implore you to get involved in our democratic process. Remember, you need to be the change that you want to see. We have over 40 advisory boards in the city that oversee the workings of our city and often make recommendations to the city commission. The wheels of progress move forward from the workings of these advisory boards and citizen organizations. I consider these roles to be key in eliciting change in our community. That's where it starts at. I believe our boards should be more reflective of the diversity of our city. To accomplish that, we need, to accomplish that, we need those who are in the marginalized community to step up and join our boards. You have to become a part of your own solution. Thank you.
As a person of intersectional identities, I can say that Lawrence has made a lot of strides and is moving forward, taking care of our different marginalized communities. I also just want to point out the kind of irony of grouping marginalized communities altogether in a single question. We have people with autism, you have people with physical disabilities, you have Native Americans, African-Americans, and a whole slew of others I haven't mentioned. Each of these groups has different needs. As Commissioner Herbert and Commissioner Larson have pointed out, our city government is doing a lot of efforts helping these groups get more representation in government. We also have a lot of organizations throughout the city that are community citizens just like you, and we have a lot of nonprofits. I am on the Board of Directors for Independence, Inc. We do a lot of work for a variety of people, those with physical disabilities, youth at risk, as well as our elders. So we are making strides. We aren't perfect. We're always going to have to keep moving forward. I know as a city, we can help create opportunities for these organizations to get some support as we do with our affordable housing programs. There's all, thank you.
This next question deals with tax incentives. Which tax incentives do you believe are working, and how can they be improved? And we'll start with you, Mike.
Tax incentives, I believe, is an important tool for spurring economic growth, but I certainly don't believe that all projects I create equal. And if you, it's a matter of well-managed use of the tax incentives and how they're used and how they're supposed to be used, is what we need to end up doing. Am I excited about giving a project tax incentives that's going to be an apartment complex on the outside of town? Absolutely not. But if a project comes in, they're going to create jobs and make a positive economic impact on the city of Lawrence, then absolutely. I think the Catalyst Program recently that we've done is a fantastic idea and exactly the kind of movement forward that we need. I'm really looking forward to seeing the outcome of that. You know, the paper often compares us to Manhattan. I think if you look at what Manhattan started doing in 2002, the forward-looking idea of growth in tax incentives, they went from $550 million in retail sales to 1.1 billion, which created 900, 600 jobs since 2002. I think tax incentives, again, when used correctly, are very effective, and I will hopefully see that we use them the way they're meant to be used and help Lawrence for economic growth for the short term and long term as well.
I think as we look at tax incentives, one of them that I want to take a particular look at right now is what are called NRAs, Neighborhood Revitalization Acts. The purpose of an NRA was designed to be a tax incentive given to someone who revitalizes a neighborhood. I would have some question, as I look back over the last decade of city government within Lawrence, at some of the efforts to revitalize neighborhoods, and I would question whether or not some of these efforts actually revitalized. You know, I come to some examples, such as the here apartment complex. I don't see a lot of revitalization of a neighborhood occurring there. But that being said, there are some tax incentives that I believe going forward could be extremely effective, one of which is the Catalyst Program. I want you to understand that at Venture Park, we have a $9.7 million special assessment looming over our heads that all of you, myself included in this room, are going to be accountable for if we don't fill that property. We have a year to get tenants onto that property before you and I start paying that debt. I have no interest in paying a $10 million special assessment debt. The Catalyst Program will enable us to fill those properties and have someone else pay that debt for us.
I believe that the Lawrence City Commission has done a good job starting addressing this issue by creating an application for developers when they're moving forward with a plan to ask for incentives. I think that we can do better on that application by providing specific information that we're looking for and bringing in incentives such as environmentally building, a building or a warehouse. So how do we do that? By bringing in incentives for using materials, by using methods, as well as creating zero-waste facilities. Additionally, I think that this is an opportunity for the city to be the rudder in the development of our community, which is going to happen one way or the other. We can guide that, or we can be caught in the wake of it.
As a member of the Public Incentives Review Committee, I've been doing a lot of research on the different kinds of incentives that we have. I think it's a little bit misleading to lump tax incentives into a large clump because there's a lot of different things that we do, from NRAs to IRBs to special taxing districts and things like that. Matthew's absolutely right. When we go through the NRA requests that we've had recently, I look at a lot of different projects, and I have to shake my head. The definition of neighborhood revitalization has not been tamped down very well. I could even point to some projects downtown that I certainly don't consider neighborhood revitalization. They're great in terms of addressing, you know, very specific people who would like to line their pockets, but otherwise, I don't think that's necessarily a benefit to the community. My opposition to the Catalyst Program originates primarily because we're giving a lot of the tax incentives that are originated for employers and instead giving them to developers. And when you change that, you change a lot of the control that we have as a city for certain jobs and employers coming into town.
We need primary businesses, and the only way to attract them is through incentives and abatements. You know, if you don't have a college degree, and you're a high school graduate, and you go look for a job, you're not going to look through Monster or whatever. You're going to look through Craigslist. And go there right now, and you will find no jobs in Lawrence, Kansas. Obviously, that's a problem. And the thing that I see is that we need something concrete and have specific guidelines. And once the business follows these guidelines, they will get the incentives depending on the growth and the jobs that they will bring to the city. It's time for us to bring the businesses in, maybe work through the Chamber and KU and the city to sit down and form a top-of-board where they can work together and decide some concrete incentives and abatements that they will offer to businesses like manufacturing or tech jobs and so forth, and also use that as a marketing tool. But we do need to do this smartly and balanced. Like Mr. Easthouse said, it's concentrate more on the employers and not on the developers.
You know, our modified economic development policy that this commission approved in early 2017, you know, it's a good step forward in providing guidelines and flexibility that's needed to encourage businesses to invest in Lawrence in a manner that should provide jobs and community good. One of those is the Catalyst Program. Now, I realize the definition of community good is very subjective, and I would relish the opportunity to have that discussion with anybody anytime. You know, I want to pursue two things. One is I would like to pursue overlay conservation district for parts of East Lawrence, and I want to see the NRA tax incentive be applied to what it was originally intended, and that is to address our blighted or challenged neighborhoods. Currently, the NRA has only been applied to new commercial multifamily mixed-use buildings. This is allowed in our policy. However, let's work to provide a program that addresses actual residential neighborhood housing structure issues in a manner that does not overtly gentrify the neighborhood.
I do agree that we have the NRAs, and they can serve our community very well if we use them intelligently, which we haven't done recently. I disagree firmly concerning the Catalyst Program. The reason I do so is because it's a race to the bottom. When we put ourselves on even footing, saying that we're going to give tax abatements and tax breaks to these other companies, these developers, because we need to stay competitive with places like Topeka, Lenexa, Alatha, well, then, when we are all on the same footing, someone's going to start going even further down, giving more, giving more rebates, more incentives. And then we've got to match them. Eventually, we're just literally giving the land away. We're saying you don't have to pay anything. I don't think that's the right direction for Lawrence if we're going to say we're going to attract businesses, if we're going to attract jobs, and we need to make sure that we have a workforce that's employed, that is trained. I know, again, this goes back to what Commissioner Herbert was saying about asset management with the Lawrence Venture Park. We built something without knowledge of it being filled. I know we're going to have to bear up that burden of $10 million, but we have to think of these kinds of things long-term. Are we going to just do that?
I do believe we should offer incentives to certain businesses. I would encourage the commission to look at businesses that offer jobs that pay enough for people to have a livable wage. So many times, we see developments come about that hire a few people at a very low wage, and then we just have more people that need to be subsidized and have trouble with housing, have trouble with food. If we can bring in businesses that pay enough, we wouldn't have that problem. I think specifically, we should not only consider the businesses that ask us for incentives, but also go out and look for businesses that are in new technology and alternative energy fields. I think these businesses would be more long-run as opposed to fixing the problem in the short run, more of a Band-Aid solution. I'll also note that as the community gets upset with certain incentives programs, the commissioners come out and speak against it and how poorly it turned out. But these are the same commissioners that allowed it to happen in the first place. So I would encourage you to look at new commissioners and see what they have to offer.
This next question will start with you, Mr. Herbert, and it's dealing with police. What are your thoughts on the recent efforts to increase police oversight, and should the chief of police continue to report to the city manager?
I think anytime we address policing, I like to look at the ways to improve policing in our community from a three-tier approach. The first tier of that approach is you have to look at all policing from a community policing perspective. If you've had an opportunity to read the Justice Department's Ferguson Report, which, by the way, every single police officer in Lawrence, Kansas, has been required to read, the key outcome of that report was this, one of the singular problems that was occurring in Ferguson was an absence of community policing. So all policing initiatives have to originate with community policing. My second tier of this three-tier approach would be looking at de-escalation training. One of the things that I'm incredibly proud of in Lawrence, Kansas, is the Lawrence, Kansas Police Department has the single-longest academy of any police department in the state of Kansas. And we do that because we set the expectation from day one that you work for the Lawrence, Kansas Police Department, and that in itself is a privilege, and you need to earn that privilege. And the third and final tier that I look at is retention. Hiring good police officers is simply not good enough. What we need to do is make sure that we're enacting policy that keeps the best police officers in Lawrence, and we don't lose them to other cities.
I grew up around law enforcement. My father was a fire chief for around 30 years, and they were housed in the same place. I also have trained law enforcement officers in my time at the Kansas Coalition Against Sexual and Domestic Violence and worked in them, with them in community organizing for coordinated community response to intimate partner violence. I know that there are phenomenal police officers out there, and we have many of them in our community. I believe that most of our law enforcement officers are there to protect and to serve our citizens and our residents. Some of them, however, are there because of power and control. When you are an officer, you have access to a lot of power and a lot of control. I believe that having a citizen review board for the actions of law enforcement officers is similar to what I do in my job, which is to be a is similar to what I do in my job, which is to be a non-biased investigator in claims of discrimination and harassment on KU's campus. It is an opportunity for an outside, objective view on the actions that occurred according to a process.
Getting back to the original question in terms of our oversight for the police, you know, I'm encouraged by the efforts of our current police oversight board. I'd like to empower them with additional responsibilities. Currently, the way things currently work with the police oversight board is only if there is an appeal made by someone who feels they are wronged through any sort of police action, does this board necessarily review it? Honestly, I'd like to see all of those reviews go automatically to this board as opposed to waiting for an appeal. I don't think there's anything wrong with oversight. I think, you know, in my job out at General Dynamics, we have internal and external auditor specifically because we want to make sure we're doing everything correct. Having oversight doesn't necessarily mean a bad thing. It means we're making sure we're doing our job correctly. And as for the chief of police reporting to anyone else but the city manager, the only other candidate for that could possibly be the city commission or the mayor, but our current structure doesn't necessarily facilitate that. Unless we have a full-time mayor on staff, the chief of police really needs to report to the manager.
The mission of the police department is to protect and serve the community. Both the police department and the community need to work together as one to make Lawrence a safe place to live. I will work for the people and act as liaison with the other commissioners to the police department. We need to utilize the citizens advisory board for fair and impartial policing to the fullest because I believe that they are our ears and eyes. As for the police department, as for the police chief, to me, it's a chain of command and that he has to report to the city manager.
Yes, I believe that the increased oversight is a step in the right direction, that is, provided that the oversight is done in a professional manner and within the confines of the law. For police officers and citizens, I believe it is important to remember what our core mission and responsibilities are as a community, and that is public safety. And it is always relevant that we remember where we come from. With that being said, I would like for us to remember the thoughts of Robert Peel, who is considered to be the father of modern policing, that the police are the public and the public are the police. I think that's a really important statement, that the police are the public and the public are the police, that the power of policing is dependent on the public's approval, cooperation, and mutual respect. The best test of police efficiency is the absence of crime and not the visible evidence of police action and dealing with them. And yes, I believe the chief of police should continue to report to the city manager.
Let's go ahead and start and say yes. I do agree that the police chief should continue to report to the city manager as the city manager reports to the city commission. I also believe that community policing is a huge aspect of us moving forward with police oversight, in particular, that the community steps up. We go on more ride-alongs. I went on one just last Saturday. You get to see firsthand how they interact with the community, and we become, in essence, a way of overlooking, we become the oversight on the police, I apologize. We also need to remember that these police officers are part of our community. We go to church with them. We eat at the same restaurants. We shop at the same grocery stores. These people are just like us. Let's quit the us versus them kind of mentality and really step up. Let's interact with them more, and they will interact with us more positively. As Commissioner Larsen was just saying, her comments, I would like to mirror them, and I know we can continue to do better by each other. The crisis intervention training that the LKPD has been engaged in, all of their staff and officers will be trained in this by the end of 2017, which is a massive step forward in positive.
First, I would like to say that yes, I do believe the police chief should continue to report to the manager. I have not seen any problems that have arose from this. I do not see any problem in police oversight. You really can't have enough transparency in all government agencies, including police. I think that there should be nothing to hide in terms of the police department, and we've seen what happens when there is less transparency in, as he's mentioned, Ferguson and several other police stations. I would continue to increase the transparency, and I also think we should look into how the police headquarters are being run, and they have asked us multiple times for more funding because of the stress that they're under over there. Thank you.
Our system is not set up where, we don't have a strong mayoral form of government. So in this system, it is extremely imperative for the chief to report to the city manager. And I would even argue that relationship between the chief and the city manager is paramount. They even hold conferences around the nation to increase the communication and the relationships between police chiefs and city managers. It's vital that they understand each other's roles. It's vital that their relationship is crucial, not only for the functioning of the police department, but to also make sure we're meeting the needs of 21st century policing. The chief of police operates with a $23.4 million budget. Certainly, with that sort of budget, it's imperative the city managers and police chief have a great relationship. Now, I am really excited for what we've been doing recently with the citizen review board. I think that's a fantastic idea. I think body cameras are fantastic. I think data regarding police stops are great. I also want to say that I really appreciate in the latest call for the new chief, there exists the line, "The need and desire for transparency and openness to the public." What a great characteristic of a new police chief.
This one will start with you, Mrs. Zananda. Do you think that adjacent homeowners or the city should be responsible for sidewalk maintenance? If you believe that sidewalks are part of the city infrastructure and should be funded as such, how would you suggest doing this?
So I do believe that the city should be responsible for maintaining the sidewalks and walkable and bikeable infrastructure around the community. I believe that we should not be paying for sidewalks any more than we should be paying for the roads in front of our houses, and we don't expect our neighborhoods and our families here to do that. As far as paying for that, if we create a system in which we do consider our bike paths and our sidewalks part of our infrastructure, they should be funded along the same manner as those things and planned along that same manner as well. I think that that is a vital issue that has come up in this campaign, and I am very clear that I believe that this is the city's responsibility. If we're not available or able to do that immediately to raise those property taxes, particularly given what we're being asked to do in the next year, then we need to immediately address families that are not able to afford revitalizing their sidewalks in front of their homes and work toward making this part of our infrastructure as soon as possible.
You know, when I started this campaign, this issue wasn't on my radar at all, and I don't know if it was on anyone else's radar. It kind of came out of left field for me. So I've had to do a lot of catching up as far as what I know about this issue. It's my understanding in conversations with the city attorney that there are certain liability issues associated if we take on as a city the responsibility of the sidewalk maintenance. If that happens, you know, we become legally responsible for a whole host of other issues that we may not be able to cover. Right now, I support the city's current program. It's not very well enforced, and it's led to a lot of issues that we've kind of been kicking the can down the road in terms of enforcement there. But I support the city policy as it currently stands. We may have to look at some alternative funding sources to assist other people who need that assistance with the sidewalk, but as of right now, I support the current city policy based on the legal analysis of Tony Wheeler.
I don't have a sidewalk where I live in my house. I'm going to be very truthful here. So, but I do believe that good sidewalks and good repairs are important to all of Lawrence. It gives the community a sense of safety and a sense of community. But here's one thing, I have never in my life have ever signed a blank check and gave it to somebody, and I will not be doing so with our taxpayers' money. I believe that sidewalks has to be an issue between the city and the person living in that house or in his sidewalks. But, you know, we just found one point, I mean, this is in the paper, there's a newfound money of $1.4 million, and that's because of our increase of our tax base. I believe that we should be using that as to help with the homeowners. But again, there is no thirsty. We don't know how much this project is to repair, all the sidewalks. There's no exact numbers. So I'm the type of person that doesn't buy a car without knowing how much it is.
You know, under our current form of government, Jason homeowners are responsible for sidewalk maintenance. However, this can be changed so that the role of government is expanded to include sidewalk maintenance. Any proposal to expand the role of government should go to the voters. I would support a referendum that was fully vetted by the public and the city prior to a vote in that the funding source is brand-new and equitably distributed. Our current budget structure is not set up to add a new government function to repair sidewalks or replace sidewalks. We have actually have some information on what that's going to potentially cost, and that is, the projected minimal cost of sidewalk repair is anywhere from $10 million just for the basic repair to $24 million for repair and equitable adding of sidewalks to all streets. There are a myriad of questions that need to be asked and answered before we would move into that direction.
I do believe sidewalks are a public good. I was having a conversation the other day with a friend who said, you know, Lawrence really loves its pedestrians and bicyclists. The infrastructure does not. So this is something we definitely look at. As has been stated before, it is not a simple solution. Charter ordinance could be written up where the city could gain control of the sidewalk repair. We would also have to look at a funding source. The most common one that I've talked with people at their front doors prior to all the county and school board property tax increases generally was about a quarter mil levy. A lot of people were okay with that. It would be equitable for renters, for homeowners, but I understand this year's going to be a hard push on everybody, so that might be a discussion we have to table for later. But it is something we do need to have a discussion about, and I do support it. I do believe the city should have that responsibility. We have kicked the can down the road for a long time. We haven't enforced the current statute, and that's why we've come to this point where $23 million, $24 million.
It's more than just the current residents that have to deal with this. When we have new members trying to come to the community and looking to see if they should work here and live here, I don't think broken sidewalks are something that they want to see. I think that we should look into different funding sources for these sidewalks. I know Mr. Shaheem talked about the $1.4 million that's now on our books that we do not have a use for. I would also note that we, as a city, or as a community, should not be raising the property taxes anymore. When we raise the property taxes, rents go up, so then we have to choose between, do we want broken sidewalks or more people without affordable housing? And so I do not think that raising the mil levy or the sales tax is something that we need to be doing.
I know it's not popular, but sidewalk repair should be on the onus of the homeowner. If you look at cities, and if you do the research, if you look at cities where the city is so responsible for 100% of the sidewalk repair, those sidewalks are in dire shape, in terrible shape. And I believe that would happen if that was going into effect in Lawrence as well. This has been on the books since 1941 at the state level, and the city put in the books in 1979. This is not something that is new for us, and I believe it would be disastrous if the city is 100% responsible for sidewalk repair. Now, I understand that all sidewalks are created equal. There are certain arteries that are more foot traffic. There are certain individuals who have physical disabilities. There are certain individuals that have low income. I completely understand that. I do think there should be some sort of program in place where people can apply for additional city assistance with their sidewalks. But once again, they should keep and remain the onus on the homeowner to fix their sidewalks. If we did 100% the city, our sidewalks would be in worse condition than they are now.
Just really quickly, I'd like to point out, the city policy currently does have the city pay for all ADA improvements to make sure we have ADA-accessible sidewalks. We also do pay for all sidewalks if the damage was done by a street tree, and we also do have a program that allows people in need of financial assistance to apply to have us pay for their sidewalks. That being said, let's talk about the actual cost of this. The original number we had when we did data was $9 million to repair the sidewalks, but folks, that is not a reality. That is based upon the city's estimate at $6 a linear foot to pour the concrete. There are exactly 31 Class C contractors in the city of Lawrence that do concrete work. We asked all 31 to submit a bid for us. Thirty of them said they had no interest in taking on such a policy. The one contractor in the city of Lawrence who submitted a bid, Owen Lehman of Vintage Greenmark, submitted a bid at $8.95 a linear foot. So understand that the data we have in front of us right now that gives us that $9 million projection is a projection based on $6 a linear foot, when the only and cheapest bid we've received is $8.95 a linear foot. I agree with Commissioner Larson. If we are to change this, if we are to home rule out of this, it has to be done as a referendum, but people have to understand the actual cost of such a policy.
With this next question, we'll begin with you, Mr. Easthouse. The conversation around economic growth seems to be around bringing in new businesses. What, if anything, can the city commission do to promote sustainability for businesses already here?
Well, that's going to be a real tough question because with Kmart distribution being in the financial straits that they are, so helping businesses that are already here when Mr. Shaheen is talking about primary businesses, we have a big one that if I were a betting man, I'd say won't be here in 10 years. When we look at the businesses that are already here, a lot of it comes down to making sure the infrastructure is there and that we can compete in the 21st century. One of the plans that I have put forth is talking about municipal fiber internet service, and that assesses new businesses coming to town in terms of data services that they may offer, but it also helps keep businesses here and helps businesses grow and expand, having that level playing field for people to be able to compete on the internet.
I believe this spot should go to the chamber. That question should be addressed to the chamber, KU, and the city, forming a board where they can decide what to give, who to give, and how to add sustainability into all this. Because, you know, some businesses that I call, you know, a primary business is not necessarily has to be 200 or 400 people. It could be 10, as long as more than half of them having livable wages. So if there are businesses here in Lawrence, then, and they fall through all these specific items of what needs to be done in order to get abatements and incentives, then yes, they can go for those as well.
You know, I do a lot of ribbon cuttings, and one thing I think does not get enough credit is businesses, as they grow, redo their buildings, that we have a lot of sustainable projects going on in Lawrence with existing businesses. I see it at ribbon cuttings all the time, where they've added on to their building, they're using repurposed materials, they're doing their roofs differently, they are adding components to their buildings and to their businesses that are sustainable. You know, we have some of the toughest environmental codes in the state of Kansas. That is a sustainable component that businesses have to meet. Should we be doing something for businesses? Businesses are doing it for themselves, and they need credit for that, and I would just continue to encourage it.
I go along with what a lot of Commissioner Larson said, that we already have our businesses in town doing this for sustainability. One thing we could also look at concerning keeping businesses in town is our tourism aspect. We have the Junior Olympics coming here. This will help some of our businesses be able to generate more growth. We also have the Eagle Bend Golf Course that is being improved. They'll be able to draw tournaments of 10,000-plus to that. This is going to be able to draw in more money. We don't have to build new facilities. We don't have to try and drag in these businesses with questionable tax incentive programs. We can use what we have here. Dollar for dollar, you get more bang for your buck out of tourism spending. We could help everyone around the country be able to see why we are unmistakably Lawrence.
I think the city needs to help expand on the small business association and encourage businesses to reach out for them for any necessary resources that they can offer. I also think that there should be business incentives for expansion. So if a mom-and-pop shop wants to turn into a much bigger business, they can get the same incentives that a new company would have gotten if they were going right into that larger business. And if the population growth allows it, I would not be against expanding the city limits. That would increase the population and then increase the customer base for most of these businesses that are already here.
I think it's a good question, Stephanie, but in my opinion, it's a very broad question. I mean, there's businesses are not all created equal, and there are many different kinds of businesses that you're asking me how to... of businesses. So you're asking me how to aid in all the different kinds. Let me just choose a few then. Let's say we're talking about Hallmark here. Well, I think that technical training is important to this city. And now I know that Peaslee Training Center is struggling. I agree. But the fact of the matter remains that there's a strong correlation between students enrolled in technical training centers and per capita median income. If Hallmark needs people to fill those jobs, they're going to need people with technical training. Now, if businesses have issues, they are specific to them, I highly recommend they reach out to places like the Chamber that have programs already established and in place to help with current businesses. I certainly am willing to help however I can too. But the fact that remains is that there are so many different types of businesses with so many different specific needs that each one has its own specific ideas.
I think one of the key things we can do is make sure that as a city commission, as a governing body, that we are not picking winners and losers. One of the things we forget is that 85% of all new jobs, and we've heard this all afternoon, that new jobs, new jobs, 85% of all new jobs are created by existing business, not by new business. And so as we craft our incentives policies, it's vitally important that we keep in mind that we shouldn't be, we should be creating a level playing field. When Lisa and I were working on our catalyst policy, for instance, one of the things that came out of the catalyst policy, while the catalyst policy was admittedly crafted for Venture Park, part of what the policy says is that anyone who meets those same requirements that we have for Venture Park that already exists can apply for the same grant. We are creating a level playing field. When I first ran two years ago, that was my biggest beef, is that we were incentivizing one company to have a heads-up on another company. We were giving one business a comparative advantage to their competitor. And that is not our role as a city commission. We don't pick the winners and losers. We prop everyone up.
I think that as a city, the things that we can do are improve our infrastructure, ensure that it's there for those businesses when they, when they need it. That includes fiber internet and providing those services as well. Our job as a commission is to create a thriving community and continue our thriving community. I believe that businesses can work with the Chamber, with the small business organization as well, to create that. We can also offer incentives, such as environmentally, environmental sustainability in the work that they do, and providing living wages, and look at incentivizing that as a possibility as we move forward.
This next question, we'll start with Mr. Shaheen. Should the city continue support for the Peaslee Center?
Should the city continue support for the Peaslee Tech Center?
Sixty seconds.
I can't stress enough how much we need primary businesses to come into Lawrence. And the Peaslee Center is a perfect example of what we need to train the right people so they can find jobs. And, but yes, I do.
Yeah, we should continue support for Peaslee. The city has, in recent years, given about, I think, $200,000 a year to Peaslee for their operations. The issue that has come up now is the actual building itself and the cost that, that they have a loan that's coming due. At this point in time, until we look at our budget going forward for next year, I would still say that we can continue, we should continue helping them with their operations and then exploring options for the actual building.
Yes, the city should continue its support of the Peaslee Technical Center. There is a variety of jobs for a variety of people across the community that this provides job training for. We also need to make sure we expand our cooperation with community and Chamber in making sure the funding becomes available for that center, as we are all benefiting from it, these businesses, as well as the city.
Yes, I also agree with the previous candidates that we should continue to fund the Peaslee Center. As I talked about earlier, technology is a field that continues to grow and offer jobs that will allow people to live a very decent life. These jobs also do not appear to be going anywhere. The jobs outlook, according to studies, looks very good in these fields. So yes, I would continue to fund it.
My mother was a nursing instructor at technical college for majority of her life. So if anyone understands the importance of technical college, it's certainly me. Absolutely, we should continue to fund it. But we're not funding it alone. We're funding it with accounting. Hopefully, we can find a third party to help us as well. In my previous answer, I mentioned how important the per capita median income and number of students enrolled in technical training center is. I think the Peaslee Training Center can be and could be, very much so, a very powerful, important part, and one of the most important buildings that could happen in Lawrence in the last two years, certainly. Now that Marvin Hunn is stepping down, I think it's imperative we do find a new director who can continue to make that training center even better than as before.
To paraphrase Dale Willey, who had a conversation about, just the other day about this, he said, "Where has this been my whole life?" This is what Lawrence has been missing for so long. The unfortunate thing of growing up in a college town, and I see this firsthand as, as a high school teacher, is we assume that every kid grows up to get a liberal arts degree. And that, and that is not a reality, and that should not be a reality. I know Action Plumbing has spent the last six months begging anyone to please apply for a plumbing job. Skilled labor positions are here. We do have jobs, and you don't have to look on Craigslist to find them. They're there, and they're in the skilled trade fields. But we don't have, we're not producing enough kids in that field to put them in those positions. And if any of you have ever paid a plumbing bill, you know that that's a living wage job. And we have an opportunity on our hands, and I strongly support the continued funding of the Peaslee Technical Center.
I agree. I support the funding of the Peaslee Technical Center as well. I think that if we have a new director coming in, then we have a responsibility to demand accountability and look at a long-term plan for what this school's financial situation will look like. And I think that that can be easily done. I do believe that technical training is important, and any of us with a liberal arts degree, film and English, knows that, that that's absolutely true. This kind of training is very important, and it's something that I want my children to be able to consider once they are finished with their, their high school education as well.
There was a recent report that said that, you know, in, coming soon, more than 70% of jobs in Kansas will require, if not a higher education degree of some sort, or technical training. Even in Lawrence, and we are very proud of our students, we're only sitting at 49%. Peaslee Technical Center is a key component to that. Now, I will go on to say that when we start looking at that, it, it boggles the mind a little bit why the school district isn't taking a part of the funding for that, because this is education training after all. I would love to see them be able to contribute towards Peaslee Tech, especially since a lot of them are the school district students anyway. But I do can advocate continuing support that through, through our support that we normally do.
All right. This next question, we'll start with you, Ms. Larson. During recent city budget discussions, it was suggested to cut the position of city auditor, which reports to the city commission. Going forward, do you support continuing to have a city auditor on staff or the formation of an audit committee?
I support auditing. This is a tough one, guys. I'm just going to say, I don't support keeping the auditor position. And that's going to come up in our budget vote very shortly. And there's very, there's reasons why I think the job, that we could get a good product by looking at having, having the commission have a set dollar amount to go externally and do those type of auditing. I'm a little concerned about having an internal auditor and whether or not it's truly an independent audit, as well as the amount of work that we are getting for the 100, I think it was $120,000 a year that, that we pay for that position. That includes all of his, his health insurance and so forth. But I believe that it can be done in a more efficient manner and, and on a, and a more independent basis.
I do support the elimination of the city auditor position, simply because at Independence Inc., we use an external auditor. It has opened up transparency, allows someone outside to look at us and help us be more accurate in our record-keeping. Also, as Commissioner Larson was saying, the transparency issue. If the commission chooses not, or I should say, the mayor and the city manager choose not to put the city auditor on the city agenda, he's just not on there. So then we don't get to hear what needs to be said. Whereas if we're using an external auditor, they have to report that. It becomes part of the public record more easily, and it's more accessible to the community.
I do not think we should cut the auditor position. Whether or not we keep the current auditor is certainly up for debate. But I do not think you can have too much auditing. We already have an outside auditing company, and we've still managed to misplace and lose millions of dollars. So that 120,000 doesn't seem like too much when you read the newspaper and see how much was misplaced.
Here's what I'm going to do. If I get the chance to become city commissioner, I'm actually going to sit down with the city auditor and talk to him and ask him, okay, in the last three years, which projects have you worked on? And how have you made an influence in these projects? And how have these projects come about? And then I'm going to take what he says. I'm going to do my own research. I'm going to look into it, and I'll make a decision based on that. But the fact that I haven't talked to the city auditor yet, I can't make a decision yet. I will sit down with the city auditor. I'll sit down with them and go through the projects he's worked on, again, the last couple of years, to determine, is this position important to the city of Lawrence? I'll do my own research, come back, and at that time, I'll have a wonderful answer for you.
Well, as of Friday afternoon, we don't have a city auditor for you to talk to anymore. But one of the big, one of the big misconceptions about our auditing position is people believe that as an auditor, he was performing financial audits. He was not. He was performing performance-based auditing. So effectively, what we were getting was, as we would go forward with a plan, we would see how comparative cities were doing it. Information we were already receiving from city staff. When we would have a technical project, we were already reaching out to outside auditing. So you, as taxpayers, were already paying twice for the service you were getting. If we lose the city auditor, which I would support under the current budget proposal, what you will be getting is the same outside auditing you are already paying for, but now you could also get this on a case-by-case basis. It's essentially the difference if you're refurbishing a house. You could call in a handyman and have him look at your entire house, or you could actually call in specialists to look at the individual parts of your house you want to repair. For my money and for your money, I want to call in those outside experts in specific areas so that we can get the best outside auditing we can afford.
I support removal of the city auditor position. However, I also support having something in place to ensure that there is an alternative solution, such as a committee. I believe that systems auditing is important, and it's important to have that objective view, and not just for specific projects, but as a community organizer, bringing those systems together and having conversations is vitally important to ensure that you're not duplicating services intentionally or unintentionally. So I do support having a committee or another group who is able to take a look at these issues broadly regarding all of the projects that occur, as well as the outside auditors for specific projects with subject matter experts.
I come from a corporate background. For the past five years, I've been working for General Dynamics Information Technology. I cannot tell you the number of times I've had both internal and external auditors come through to make sure I am doing my job right, even at a relatively low level that I am. I have absolutely no problem with both internal and external auditors. Now, I will agree, the way our current city auditor was structured didn't necessarily meet a lot of the needs. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't have someone internally who's taking a look at us for best practices. Frankly, that's part of ISO certification that we have to go through every time. I have no problems having both internal and external auditors, because the more eyes we have on something, the better.
If the auditor that we had did not, wasn't even a financial auditor, I'm just right there. I'm going to save us money. We will not need one here in Lawrence. So I do support having an outside auditor to come in whenever need be, like Matthew said, to find specific reasons, and also to find money that the city didn't count for. Thank you.
We'll start with you, Mr. Stumbling Bear, on this next question. With the current administration in Washington not prioritizing climate change, what is your opinion on this? And what are your plans to make our town greener? Sixty seconds.
Loaded question indeed. So I definitely support the recent move by our city commission to make sure we stay a part of the climate, Paris Climate Accord. We need to make sure as part of our development of new streets and whatnot, that we contain and maintain our green spaces, that we continue with sustainable buildings, that we continue with green energy. These things are what we need to invest in long-term. There's a cost to it right now, absolutely. But in the long-term, we'll be able to wean ourselves off of fossil fuels within the city, which then allows us to, I'm sorry, just have a lower carbon footprint across the board. We also need to think individually in our homes, ways to conserve resources, whether it's our water, whether it's just our electric, electronic use, sorry. So that's where I stand.
I again was happy to see that the commission stood in solidarity with the Paris Climate Agreement. But without action, that's just words. I haven't seen any steps, meaningful steps, that have been taken in order to help and move forward with the agreement. I think that we should not only offer incentives to businesses that create their buildings in a green way and operate in a green way, but actually businesses that are entirely designed to create alternative and renewable energy. I had the pleasure of speaking with a small business owner who was looking to come to Lawrence, and he created alternative energy sources which not only would go to Lawrence, but other communities around the United States. So it wouldn't so much hurt the energy jobs that we already have, but it would simply increase it by several hundred. And these are well-paying jobs.
Lawrence is doing a good job, I think, but we can always, of course, do better. I would love to also see businesses have a green element, especially when applying for tax incentive. Having a green element would certainly pique my interest, but of course. I think we can also look to other cities as well to see what they're doing. I, one of the things I see a little bit lack of is we don't really look at other cities. I mean, Lawrence is unique, most certainly, but some of our problems aren't. I think we could look to other cities, and especially in this area, when it comes to sustainability and green living. Look at what's, for example, we could look at what San Jose is doing with zero waste. There are plenty of other options out there for cities that have done this wonderfully, and I would love to continue to look at other cities and see what they've done for green, find the benefits, find the weaknesses, and proceed for.
I absolutely agree that words are just words and that actions are a whole lot better. So I'd love to take my 60 seconds and tell you about the actions that the city commission has done. We recently, as of about a year ago, hired 360 Energy Auditors, which is a local company, to come in and audit the energy efficiency of all of our city buildings. They then presented to us a laundry list of energy improvements we could make. And here's the best part, all of which pay themselves off. So we have already implemented this. Every single city building is currently undergoing energy improvements that pay themselves off in their energy improvements. It is free over time. You're already beginning to see it here. If you look through that wall, clearly you can, on the other side of it, are brand-new energy-efficient windows. We replaced all of them. That was the start. You'll begin to see LED lighting throughout the library. You'll begin to see all of these improvements occurring throughout city buildings. And this was done via hiring a local company, 360 Energy Audits, to come in and show us how we can save money by becoming green. So you're right, words are just words, but this city commission is absolutely acting upon them.
Part of my platform for running is environmental sustainability. I believe that there are visible and invisible ways that we can do better. Lawrence has always done well at this compared to other cities, and I'm proud of the work that we have done and continue to do. I think that some of the visible ways that we can set ourselves apart as far as being green are installing things like solar panels where appropriate on city property, installing EV charging stations in public parking spaces, offering those kind of visible ways to show that we're committed to this. And continue those invisible ways. When we create new buildings, modifying our existing buildings to ensure that they are zero waste, if possible, using sustainable building materials. I also believe that we can offer incentives to other builders and developers in our community, including residential builders, to use sustainable materials, to reuse materials, and to offer zero-waste facilities.
Well, just to highlight to everyone, a lot of the incentives that we do on the Public Incentives Review Committee are tied to certain energy efficiency standards already. So when we talk about the incentives that we could offer, we're already doing a pretty good job of that right now, wanted to make everyone aware of that. You know, when we start talking, I mean, certainly, I think all of us are in agreement here, we're ecstatic that we're still taking part in the Paris Climate Accords. We're Lawrence. We're a progressive city. I mean, that's part of our lifeblood. We have and always will be on that edge. I know things like solar panels and things of that nature are sexy, but really, the important things are the things that the city is currently doing, the, the, the windows and the LED lighting and things like that. Those are where your real energy efficiencies are, are found and calculated. We have things that we could be doing that maybe show things off, but in the end, you know, those little things are what really matter for us.
I want to answer, yes, climate change is real. That was your first question. So last year, I ran for, for county commission and attended a few county commission meetings as well. And I felt like every other county, county commission meeting was about green energy and climate change. And I saw the same thing, and sustainability. And I saw the same thing with this commission. And I saw the same thing, and sustainability, and I saw the same thing with this commission and their meetings, and they do work really hard, and I think Lawrence is definitely moving in the right place, and that's what I think.
I would just like to add to the 360 contract. One thing that the city staff did and the commission strongly supported was in that contract, if we don't see those savings, they pay us. So it's extremely important to understand, and I think that's a great aspect of that contract. Now, I want to take a little bit of different bent on, on this question of national versus local. About two years ago, I attended the National League of the Cities in Washington DC. One of the topics I, talks I went and saw was on climate change, and we had several dozen mayors there that had actually gone to the Accords and was part of the national mayors, international mayors, whatever society. And what they, what they, that group did, there was like 400 or 380, something in that range, and what they did was, their entire function was to push the idea that climate change is number one, real, and two, locally, you've got to do something about it. And what they saw was that the problem in past Accords was that the top-down approach of trying to get climate change understood better was having a hard time passing at the high levels. What happened on the Paris Accord was that the mayor groups were able to actually make the change from the bottom up. And that, I believe, is what is really important, and that's the only way we're gonna do it nationally, is because we've got to do it locally and work it way up.
Mr. Lyke, this question, how would you address homelessness?
I think that there's a couple of ways to address homelessness. I think that, first of all, I am a member of a church that does quite a lot for the homeless, and I really think that there should be partnerships, the city and different non-city-run organizations to help them. But I also think that affordable housing is something that we definitely need to do. We have to make sure that the city does not turn out to be, you know, overrun by people that cannot afford their houses. We can do this in a couple of ways. We can help by getting these people jobs and training, so that they can afford to live in these houses, and we can also do it by offering them temporary housing until they can get on their feet.
It's about having programs in place and making sure the homeless people know there are programs in place to help them. I think what Mia Gonzalez and the Lawrence Community Shelter is doing and has been doing is absolutely fantastic. And as a city commissioner, you need to stand by that sort of hard work and dedication to help individuals out in their time of need. So in this situation, it's absolutely imperative that any city commissioner, or any city commission, of course, the city does everything they can to help places like a Lawrence Community Shelter thrive better, so they can help the homeless.
I think one of the things we'll be looking at in the future with the Lawrence Community Shelter, if any of you have not had a chance to tour it, I recommend that you do. When you go through the Lawrence Community Shelter as it stands right now, approximately 80 to 85% of the square footage of that facility is dedicated to the housing of individuals, and about this much of it is dedicated to the housing of families. What I would like to see change with the Lawrence Community Shelter is an inversion of that. Our shelter needs to be aimed at assisting our families in need. You know, I teach at Lawrence High School, and I have homeless students every single semester, and I can't tell you how difficult it is to teach a homeless child, a child who is not concerned about senior government, but who is concerned about where their next meal is coming from. My priority when it comes to funding the shelter will be to make sure that our shelter is designed to assist families and not tailored to assist solely individuals. But I think there's also front-end work. How do we assist people before they become homeless? A lot of that is gonna be dealing with mental health care. As I mentioned earlier, I'm a proud supporter of the RAP program. You know, my family's a proud donor to Burt Nash. I think these are two incredibly important facilities in our community.
I think that we have to look at the issue of homelessness from a perspective of prevention and intervention. Prevention is a bigger issue, and it involves dealing with mental health and addiction issues. It involves dealing with poverty. It involves dealing with issues like intimate partner violence and sexual assault, which is why most women are homeless, or they've at least experienced that if they're experiencing homelessness as well. These are big issues, and they're really difficult to address. So in the meantime, we have to look at providing affordable housing. We have to look at the services that our shelters are offering and ensuring that they are safe and accessible to everyone. I think that simultaneously, we have to be looking at those bigger issues, and how do we address those and prevent the homelessness from occurring in the first place.
You know, I'm a resident of the Prairie Park neighborhood, which whole houses the jail, the proposed mental health facility, and the homeless shelter, as it currently is. These are issues that, that impact our neighborhood every day, for better or for worse. If the issues of homelessness are not dealt with in an appropriate manner, that spills out into my neighborhood, so it's really near and dear to my heart. I agree with you, Matthew. The, the issue that I see out there when I go out and tour the facility is that there is not enough room for families out there. It is mostly individual, but I think that's because a lot of the people who end up out there are individuals. Right now, I don't think there's necessarily a very good way for people, if you visit out there and you review the policies, when someone is violent or someone is denied access to the facility, a lot of it is almost a catch-and-release. You know, there's a police call that's made, but that person is in the neighborhood and trashing people's yards before we really know what to do with it. We have to have a better facility where we know what to do with it. And I agree, I think mental health is a big issue that we need to, to address that with our homeless population.
I'm a downtown business owner in a couple of locations, and I, between me and you, I do not think that we have that much of a homeless issue. Unfortunately, we do have a lot of mental, mental health crisis going on downtown. I can name all of them before you tell you the truth. You got the person in front of the burger stand with no barefoot, you give him food, saying that he's hungry, he throws it on the floor. You have the pirate that screams at people and cusses at their children, you have, you know, so it's all, it's, I mean, obviously, we have a mental health crisis going on, and that's why we need to utilize the mental health courts more. There's also veterans down there who do have an alcoholic problem. That's why I also believe that we need an alcohol court as well, and a drug court, because these are the people, unfortunately, that do go to the jail and get out the next day having the same problem, and they cannot utilize our shelters. So these guys need help, and we need to help them.
Yeah, I want to tell you a little bit about a program that we have supported as a city commission, I think it was a year ago. The city put in $100,000, and the county also put in $100,000 on a collaborative, collaborative project called the Horizon Program. And this is targeted at families, at homeless families specifically. And the issue we had out there, at the time that we started this, this program was started, there was about 60 families that were at the homeless shelter. And within a year after allocating that money, that number is now down to about 30. So it's a program that's working, a program I strongly support, and the money that was used to house those families goes directly to landlords, because now you're talking about economic development. And so that's what I see as a top priority, is to get those families out of their, out of the shelter. I do strongly support the shelter. We provide, like I said, funding for it, and we need to continue with that.
As everyone's been able to hear, it's a multifaceted issue with a lot of different answers, a lot of different approaches. I support most of, well, actually, everything that's been said concerning mental health. We also need to think of our veterans' care. We also need to think, as Commissioner Larson was just talking about, the Horizon Program and continuing to fund and support that. We also have to recognize that there are some people that don't want help. There was a recent article in the Lawrence Journal World where it was stated that some people enjoy that transient lifestyle. So we need to find ways to deal with that. I can't think of one off the top of my head, as I said, because they, they enjoy living on the street. I've seen several of them downtown when I'm down there, kind of on a first-name basis, because we always just say hello to each other. They're not bad people, they just enjoy that lifestyle, so we need to accept that some people enjoy it, and for those that need help, the families, the individuals, we can certainly look at different programs and continue the programs we're already working on now, and that is what I would do. Thank you.
With this question, we'll start with you, Mike. If you had to cut one program or service the city currently provides, what would it be and why?
If I could cut one program the city serves?
Program or service, yes.
Well, I guess in the stand that I sit here right now, I don't have enough information to cut any one particular issue. I do think that one of the things I have going for me is the ability to talk to everybody involved and make the best possible outcome. I don't think I can cut something right now, because I haven't talked to enough of the individuals and involved with that to make such a draft to cut something that quickly. I do think that I can operate at a high level, and one of the things I see is, one thing I think we can certainly do is we can look at our different advisory boards. I think we can consolidate some, I think we can sunset others, but in terms of the meantime, if you want me to give you a one strong one, the fact of the matter is, it takes a lot of information, takes talking to the city staff, it takes a lot of time and energy. Certainly, it's time that I have, but not being a part of the commission and talking to the city, I don't have an answer at that time, at this time.
Well, I guess the one, the one position that, that I would cut within the city would be the city auditor position, as we've recommended for, for next year's budget. As I said before, it's not that I'm opposed to auditing services, it's that we're duplicating services currently. With a city auditor on staff, people in the community are assuming that it's finance-based auditing, and it's not. We're seeking outside auditing to, to get that service done, and so, as it currently stands, since I was elected in April 2015, taxpayers have spent close to a quarter million dollars on the city auditor position, and frankly, we've received a lot of duplication there, and that's, you know, we can't go back and get that money, and I think that our city auditor did a fine job for what he was asked to do, but the way the position was set up was, was just set up to not be successful for what we really need. So that will be my recommendation with this coming budget.
Mrs. Nalden?
That is a tough question, to completely cut a program or a service, and I think that it is a cost-benefit analysis that you have to review in order to ensure that you're making the best decision for the community. Ironically, that auditor would probably be the person that you would assign that job. So while I am in support of reducing that position, I do think that a committee would be able to provide that kind of a report to the city commission, so that you're able to make a decision like that.
In the capital improvement plan, and this is kind of a tough issue, of course, I mean, no one ever wants to cut services because they all feel vital, but in our current capital improvement plan, we're funding a tax increase right now for entirely new construction of a police station. My position as someone who's been a county, an election judge with Douglas County, is that the voters two years ago rejected a tax increase for a new police station construction. We're now increasing a different tax without your consent for a new police station construction. I know it's two different taxes, but I think that's spitting in the face of the voters, personally. So when it comes down to it, you know, I think you deserve to have a voice in that, in that, as of right now, you haven't given us that permission, so I would vote to get rid of that.
I, I don't have a lot of info, and the only thing that comes in my mind is what Matthew Herbert said, and again, the fact that we don't have a financial auditor and that we, there's no reason for that to be in the budget. But yeah, that's, that's what I'll take out.
Well, to, to cut just a specific service, I think, I think that that's a little bit irresponsible to do that without a lot more information. Here's what we've done in the past two budget cycles, and this, this Cooney, this one, is last year, we cut seven and a half, seven and a half positions. This year, we're cutting 11 positions, and it's all mostly been through attrition, so it hasn't impacted that. Now, we've also implemented priority-based budgeting, so that we rank all of our projects in that we are working on those that we need first, and then those that we want if there's funding available. And I think that's very important to understand, that we are implementing efficiencies in our programs, and that's how we can save money across the board. To say you'll cut a service, I think that's short-sighted.
I agree with Commissioner Larson that it's not just short-sighted to cut a service, it's draconian. We don't need to go down that route. Everything we have in the city, we are actually using. There has been studies to show that we are using this stuff intelligently. We have our external audit reports that show we are using this stuff intelligently. So I don't think there's anything that we can really cut at this time that wouldn't have a negative impact on a sizable portion of our community. So I can't say that I would cut any service right now.
If I were to hear a recommendation before the commission that did not affect the safety or the education or the transportation of Lawrence citizens, I would at least hear it and talk to auditors and see if it would be in the best interest of the taxpayers to cut it. But again, I would need more information, and I, at this time, do not have it.
And with that, that wraps up the forum. Thanks for joining the Voter Education Coalition and Six News Lawrence City Commission Candidate Forum. A special thanks to all of the candidates. Also, a very special thank you to the city of Lawrence for providing the venue as well as videotaping the event. Have a good evening.
[applause]
Yeah, no, it's, it's not all that much. It's my only one, also.